All right, we'll give Lisa another second here and then you can start with the formalities. I guess while we're waiting, it says adjourning at 5:30, but Peter, I'm hoping that we will be able to adjourn this by 5:00 so that we can go into executive. Think that's possible?
I, yeah, I think we have a pretty quick presentation for, from, from Chris's story at West, so he's only got several slides, so to be real.
Cool, thanks. I'm gonna go ahead and call this work session to order. I want to note that following the work session, we will go into an executive session pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute, RRS 192.6602H, to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of the public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. With that, let's go ahead and start with the DEQ presentation, and I'm sure Lisa will be here any moment. Air Quality Report, and our presenters are Tom Royk and Scott Peirman from DEQ.
Yes, so, good afternoon, Mayor Gamba and councilors. I am Tom Royk, I'm the Air Quality Monitoring Manager for DEQ. My staff, our staff are based out of our DEQ laboratory in Hillsborough, and we maintain our air quality monitoring network statewide from here in Hillsborough. With me is Scott Peirman, so Scott is one of our data analysts here at DEQ. So I thought I'd talk for just a couple of minutes about our air toxic monitoring program, to put it in the context of Precision Cast Parts facility and the monitoring we did near Precision Cast Parts. And then I'll hand it over to Scott, and Scott will kind of provide some, some charts and talk more about what we actually found when we did that monitoring near PCC. So, and hopefully we'll have plenty of time for questions, we're certainly prepared for that. So, back in 2016, some of you might recall, there were a lot of concerns about air toxics and air pollution in the Portland metro area, and metals in particular. So, so at that time, we actually started setting up air toxics monitoring for metals specifically at certain facilities. So we had three air toxics monitoring locations near the PCC facility. We also were doing monitoring near two other facilities that were art class related facilities at the same time. So the, the objective of that time was to collect a lot of data in a very short period of time, so we're actually collecting samples every day during that time period from April through October, I believe it was, in 2016. And so that, that level of monitoring was not something we could sustain in perpetuity, so over time, we actually scaled back from the three locations we had monitoring for metals to one location at the 45th and Harney location. And we scaled back from, but we actually expanded, so we went back from just metal monitoring, we expanded to what we call our full suite of full air toxics monitoring at that 45th and Harney site. And the main difference being that we went from daily monitoring down to sampling once every six days, which is the schedule, schedule that's established by US EPA. So when we do our full air toxics monitoring, such as we did at 45th and Harney, it's consistent with what EPA requires for other air toxics monitoring sites across the country.
So this is not a random thing, it's scheduled every sixth day?
It is exactly, Mayor Gamba. EPA actually provides a schedule, and we sample on those days that EPA says to sample.
And not that I think this about Precision Cast Parts, but don't we have concerns that bad actors would take advantage of knowing exactly when you're going to be monitoring and?
Yeah, there, I mean, there is certainly the, the potential for that. It, it is, it's on a six-day rotation in the sense that, so every week we monitor is a different day of the week. So if we monitor on a Sunday, the next week we're going to be monitoring on a Saturday, and the next week on a Friday. So it's, it is, although it's established, it's set up in a way where we're hitting each, every day of the week as part of that monitoring process over time. So that, that monitoring, so when I say full air toxics and what we were doing at that station, and it includes a suite of different compounds. So one of those, for example, is volatile organic compounds, and so benzene is example of a VOC. It includes pHs or poly-nuclear aromatic hydrocarbons, so naphthalene is example of a pH. And carbonyls is another classic compound, so formaldehyde is an example of a carbonyl. And then metals, of course, and we monitor for 10 metals, so arsenic, lead, and others. So that's, that's the monitoring we did at that location near, near PCC for a little over, a little over a year. And, and then we scaled that back. So, so our program involves, well, back in 2016, we had two full air toxics monitoring stations running in the state. One of those is the Humboldt School in Portland, and the other is actually in La Grande, to be representative of more of a rural community. So since 2016, we've actually expanded, we have 10 full air toxics sites running now in the state. So that's representing areas like Medford and Eugene and Bend, and we have four running here in the Portland metro area. Back in 2016, PCC was one of the first that we operated as what we call a rotating air toxics monitoring station. So, so actually monitor, we set up, we monitored for one year at least, and then at the end of that, we, we pick up the equipment and we can move it to another place in another part of the state. And that allows us to basically extend our resources so we have ability to hit other parts of communities in the state that we might otherwise be able to monitor in. So, so we monitored near PCC for a little over a year, and then we stopped monitoring there. And, and right now, for example, we're monitoring in Corvallis with the same type of program. So, so that gives us ability to not only have some stations that, what we call trend sites, where we're going to be looking at concentrations for several years to see if things change. And in other locations, we're simply monitoring for one year in a given community, so we can kind of get a sense of what that, what their toxics are in our community. And that's what we did here at PCC. So we have a combination of the very short-term metals monitoring that we did back in 2016, which was targeting metals specifically, and then an extension of that with the full air toxics monitoring we did for the next little over a year after that. So that's kind of a snapshot of, of what we're doing statewide on air toxics monitoring. I'm gonna hand it over to Scott, and he's gonna talk more specifically about what we found at PCC. But yes, I'd be glad to answer questions if you have them, you know, anytime.
I think Lisa had a question. You're muted, Lisa.
Uh, my question was gonna be, what do you, what did you find at PCC? But you're going on to that.
Yes.
Where, you said there was one station, um, I, I'm sorry, I was late to the meeting, having some technical difficulties. Where, uh, where was it located? You probably said this already, from the campus? And do you think one station captures everything in terms of wind directions and things like that?
Yes, counselor, good question. So, so the short-term metals monitoring we did back in 2016, we had three different locations because for the, in the short term, it's hard to capture a given wind direction and things like that, knowing that you're really getting a representative sampling. And so for the short term, it helped us to have three locations around the facility. So for the full air toxics monitoring, we, we do at least one year, and the reason we do one year is partly because things do change seasonally. So wind direction changes seasonally. And so if we have one station, then we're accounting for some of those, that seasonality and changes in wind direction things over time over the year. So, so that's how we, how we address it. These are fairly substantial stations, and so we wouldn't really have the ability to set up, say, three of them like we would back in 2016 to do that. But by, by running for more than one year, or at least one year, we're accounting for changes, seasonality and other things over time.
Thank you.
Okay, Scott, you wanna go ahead and queue us up and share some of the data, and we'll show you what we found?
All right, um, let me share my screen here. And can everyone see this? All right. Thanks, everyone. Yeah, thanks for having us here. It's great to, great to share what we're doing here. So, yes, a good question. Yeah, you know, where are these sites? So as Tom mentioned, I did a great job there. We had three sites initially where we just measured metals only for a period of about six months. And I'll go, I just have basically three charts, or, you know, three charts that I want to talk through, and then we can have time for some more additional questions as well. Um, so, yeah, as Tom mentioned, when all this was going on, you know, we set up three individual sites where we just measured metals. We didn't measure those other groups of pollutants that Tom mentioned. We're just focused on metals. And what my coworker put together here in this chart was an attempt to essentially compare an average concentration of, of these metals before PCC installed some pollution controls that we are aware of. And then the average concentration of that pollution, or that pollutant after they installed that pollution control. Um, so if we look at the first one, arsenic, for example, in the blue, dark blue and light blue is the 52nd and Southeast Harney Drive site. And the dark blue represents the average concentration of arsenic before they put in their pollution controls. And the light blue represents the average concentration afterwards. So you can see there was a lesser concentration that we found in the period after. Um, but I don't want to spend too much time on this because it doesn't quite tell the whole story. The reason, and I'll go into that, but I do want to show you this because a lot of times, you know, that's a, and, and certainly around these types of scenarios, that's something that people are interested in more. You know, how, can, what were the, what were the levels like before, and then what were the levels like after? Um, so anyway, this was, uh, you know, sort of an attempt to just, you know, explore the data and look at what we had. But a couple of things to note here. Question, Mayor?
Yeah, so that's chromium, right? The, the one kind of in the middle?
Correct, yeah, hexavalent chromium, which is one of the main, yeah, pollutants that we were looking at, yeah.
I was having to go way back to high school chemistry. But I noticed that it doesn't change at all at the Spring Water corridor testing station. Is that indicative of that, that may be coming from elsewhere, from another plant out on Spring Water?
Um, I can't say where, there are ways to explore that, but we will look at that, I'll, I'll show you on the next slide. And you are right, you know, we didn't really see any, any change really at that site. Uh, the other two sites, it appears there was, you know, a reduction. Um, and, you know, certainly if we look at nickel, um, you know, quite, quite a big reduction there. And so I'll go on to the next, and maybe this will help kind of point to a little more of an answer there, but this, this is a time series chart that shows those three, basically the, the, kind of the three main metals that we were looking at, arsenic, hexavalent chromium and nickel, uh, and the concentrations at each of the sites. So for example, if we look at the first row here at 45th and Harney, we can see arsenic concentrations throughout that time, that six-month period. Again, these are just metals, what the hexchrome concentration was at that site and the nickel. Well, uh, is, we know that pollution controls were installed around May 16th. Um, and, you know, if we look at nickel, we can kind of see that, that, the timing of the, the drop. Nickel coincides with the installation of those pollution controls. But what you'll notice is we don't have a whole lot of data before May 16th. You know, we just started, by the time we got our monitors out there, it was, you know, the beginning of, of April. So we don't have a whole lot of that sort of pre-project period. Um, but, uh, you know, we did continue monitoring all the way through October at each of these sites. One thing to note from this data is arsenic, for example, if you look at arsenic across all three sites, you'll see that there's kind of a dip in the middle, and you get these, you know, wacky, high concentrations on, on either end. And that's because arsenic is a seasonal pollutant, and we do see this across the state, both in, in rural areas and in urban areas. So, um, you know, in terms of, of looking at arsenic, and as Tom sort of alluded to, um, you really do have to look at it across a whole year in order to capture that seasonality. If you're just looking in the summer, for example, you're gonna find low concentrations, and if you're just looking in the winter, you're gonna find higher levels of, of arsenic.
Is that from wood burning stoves, or what causes the seasonality? I know there's a lot of arsenic in wood.
Yeah, there's, yeah, some, some from burning, it is found naturally in the soils, so it's, it's, I don't know if I want to say theorized or believed, but, uh, you know, the wind transport of arsenic from soils is, is a possible contributor. Um, and again, you know, we, uh, since we do have, in Oregon, has the luxury of, of having a rural air toxic site that kind of serves as a background, we can see, well, what are arsenic levels like in a less populated area versus arsenic levels like in a populated urban area? And they, what we'll see on the next slide, there, you know, there, might be surprised, they're not too different. Um, so again, here, as, as Mayor Gamba, you were looking at hexavalent chromium in this middle column here. Uh, you know, we didn't find as much at the 45th and Southeast Harney Drive site as we did at the Milwaukee Johnson Creek location. Um, again, this is just during that six-month period. Um, we, and we continued monitoring, uh, from October of 2016 through December of 2017. So we actually have a whole other year of data in addition to this, and we'll look at that next. Um, so, yes, as Tom mentioned, you know, um, long-term data collection is really important and really helps, uh, tell the full story of what's going on at a site. So that's what we did. We, uh, we chose to continue monitoring at one of these locations, which was the, um, 45th and Harney location. And we continued to operate that for a full year, and we added not just the metals, but we added the three other groups of pollutants. The pHs, the volatile organic carbons, and then the carbonyls. Um, so we could really get a full picture of, of what's going on around this area. And there's a question.
I, I just want to make sure I understand. So you're saying those spikes, those seas, what you call seasonality for arsenic is really, it's not about the wind direction was going the wrong, the other way during the other months. It is actually arsenic comes out of the smokestack more?
Well, so it, it's, it's, it's really all of that. I mean, wind direction does play into the transport, but during the, uh, winter months, when you have, let's say, rain events that are, you know, washing soils and eroding soils throughout the landscape, even in an urban area, and you get a dry day, uh, you know, let's say a dry week like we've had recently, and you get some winds that can be, uh, you know, an instance where you get more wind trans- know, an instance where you get more wind transport of, uh, soil-based arsenic. I'm, uh, yeah. Um, yeah. Looked at, uh, a lot of, uh, research about that.
So there's not, uh, any reason to think that's a different, I mean, those kind of, uh, levels would not, there's no reason to think that's a difference at what's going on inside precision cast parts. It's coming from?
Uh, you're right. Well, so come, the, the next thing we did, uh, I'll show you here, is we basically, let's take these levels and see how they compare to other sites across the state. And I think that, that's what we did and that's really, uh, what I think will be really informative. So that's exactly what we did. So we stayed, um, you know, monitoring at precision cast parts, uh, the one location near precision cast parts, I should say, uh, until December 2017, as Tom mentioned, uh, sampling once every six days. And, uh, Tom explained why that is. And what we did was compare the levels that we found there to other areas in the state. So this is a really great summary table that I, that does that. It summarizes the data that we found and it compares the levels at other sites. And, uh, so here we have 45th and Harney site near precision cast parts, uh, right next to our, uh, site in Gresham, uh, site in the Cooley neighborhood in northeast Portland. And then this Portland Nats site, as Tom mentioned, is near, uh, the Humboldt Elementary School, kind of in, in North Portland. And then we have what I would consider that are more rural sites being the DOWs, uh, and then La Grande and northeastern Oregon. So again, if we just start from the top.
If I could just chime in for a sec, I'll just note, we, we have a lot of jargon and a lot of acronyms in air quality monitoring. So, so Nats on this is actually National Air Toxics Trend Site. So those are supported by EPA and we have two of those in Oregon. So I just thought I'd note it. Certainly if, and if we're using words that, that don't make sense to you because we're so used to these, I don't hesitate to ask. Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Tom. And yeah, with the, just a few minutes, uh, I just, I think really the take-home point is, is this. We monitored, uh, at all of these sites, at each of these sites, we measured, uh, 109 different pollutants is, is how many we, we look at. And, um, of those 109 pollutants, we have benchmarks or sort of targets or goals set for, uh, 28 of those. So for those 28 pollutants that were most, uh, you know, that we have these, these goals for, we said, okay, how many are above that annual goal? And, uh, and this is what we have here. So arsenic, for example, I'll just walk you through this. Uh, we basically compared the level of arsenic that we found at 45th and Harney for that full year and we saw that it was 3.4 times higher than our goal that we have, uh, set for, for it. And those goals in Oregon are called ambient benchmark concentrations. Not every, these aren't regulatory, they're not standards, these are just goals that, uh, State of Oregon is, uh, has, has, has set and, and, um, is sort of something to shoot for, right? So, um, so we look at arsenic, we say, wow, it's 3.4 times above its goal. Um, but, you know, looking across, we see that maybe that's, you know, it's pretty consistent everywhere. Um, in terms of being above, it's, it's the, the target or the goal that we have set for it. Um, and then if you look down the list, you know, you can pick your, uh, pollutant here in, in a category and just really see how it compares across the state. Um, and then lastly, I want to point out, uh, in the last column here, uh, this, uh, all urban Nats sites column, basically what we did is we said, okay, let's take all of EPA's monitoring stations, uh, in urban areas throughout the United States and let's, let's average the arsenic levels at those and see how they compare to our urban sites. And, and that's what we get. So that really, uh, that allows us to really just compare, you know, the levels that we're seeing with levels in other urban areas across the United States. And in some cases, uh, with like formaldehyde, for example, um, you know, being 9.9 times above the target or the goal that we have set here in Oregon, you might say, wow, that's, we're not doing so hot. Um, but, you know, compared to other urban areas and, uh, monitor, other urban monitoring locations in the EPA's program, we're actually doing a little bit better, uh, because they're at about 15 times above their, their target or our target and we're, we're below that. So, um, what you will notice here, I guess, one, one more thing is that, uh, hexavalent chrome, we did not find, uh, above the, the ambient benchmark concentration that we have for X-chrome here. Um, we did not find cadmium at a level that was above its, its annual benchmark. Um, but, but these are the ones we did find. And we have some questions.
Go ahead, Kathy.
So I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to parse the story that you're, you're trying to tell here and I, I, I'm not quite sure if I'm hearing it correctly. What I'm getting is that, well, so I have two questions. One is what are the benchmarks supposed to be? Are they, um, health-related benchmarks or, you know, you said that they're just, the state of Oregon has these benchmarks. I'd like a better context for, for why those numbers are the benchmarks. And then it feels like you're trying to say, well, you know, these, these substances are all over the benchmarks, but, you know, comparatively, everybody's over the benchmarks, which honestly doesn't make me feel great. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure if that's the message you're trying to send or if you are trying to suggest that, uh, it's not necessarily PCC that is causing this because just the ambient levels of these pollutants are higher, uh, over benchmarks generally speaking? Or, or what, what it is that you're, you're attempting to use this data to tell us?
Thank you, Kathy. You're, you're, you're right on point with your questions. Um, so I'll do my best to answer them succinctly, uh, and, uh, air toxics data is very confusing. So, uh, um, you're not alone in that. So the benchmarks are, are health-based. Um, and, uh, basically they, in, in simplest terms, they are, they're health-based goals and targets. The average, uh, or, you know, the risk of getting cancer is about one in three, which is, uh, when I found out, it was pretty shocking. Um, so we don't want to add to that, right? So these goals are, are set so that the, if you were to breathe a certain concentration of, of a pollutant over the course of your entire life, uh, the additional risk of getting cancer would not be more than one in a million. And, uh, that's about the simplest way to put what these benchmarks are. Your second question is what is the story here? And in some ways, uh, you were, you were right on compared to other locations, uh, which is important to do to, I think, really tell the story. Um, you know, I think that's part of it is like, well, we're actually kind of in line with other urban areas in the U.S. and also, um, other urban areas across the state. Um, and what I'm not saying is that that's necessarily okay. Um, but I do want to stress that as you look maybe more after this meeting into these goal, into these, uh, benchmarks, uh, they are, they are really just targets, um, and goals. So, um, you know, we're, we're saying we're above our target, but, um, you know, these are, these are sort of, um, they're very, the, the targets in these benchmarks are very protective of, of vulnerable populations. So, um, yeah, I'm not saying, not, not saying it's okay.
If I could add a couple of things, Scott. So, um, so EPA does have standards for other, what are called criteria pollutants. So sulfur dioxide, carbon monoxide, ozone, those do exist and they're set at the federal level. For air toxics, EPA does not have those kinds of criteria. And so the state of Oregon convened a science advisory panel and that science advisory panel developed the ambient benchmark concentrations. So we do have something that we can look at as, as a benchmark, as Scott mentioned, um, for us in Oregon. And, and again, as Scott mentioned, um, the fact that we're above the benchmark, at least for DEQ, means that, you know, we have work to do to reduce air toxics concentrations in, in the state. Um, and so that's, that's, that's something that we're, you know, that's part of our message for our own air toxic monitoring program. Lisa?
Um, so am I understanding correctly that these seven substances are the only ones out of 109 where we exceeded the benchmarks?
It is a little bit, uh, tricky, but basically we, out of the 109 pollutants that we measure, we only have benchmarks established for 28 of those. And the reason for that is because, you know, these are pollutants that, and in order to, you know, it takes a lot of research studies, studies on rats typically, um, you know, to, to develop a, a benchmark, a health-based benchmark for each of these. So the fact of the matter is, um, we just don't have, you know, the, the data and the research to have benchmarks for all of these.
So this is seven out of 28?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so out of the 28 that we have benchmarks for, these are the only ones that we found that had average levels above their, our, our benchmarks.
Okay.
Correct.
And just out of curiosity, why is, um, do you know why the DOWs is so off the charts on formaldehyde? It's like double everyone else?
Um, so, yeah, as far, I can't really speak to all of these in terms of the, you know, and I think, uh, um, Counselor Kathy, uh, you had asked, you know, about the sources. Um, you know, we're really just, um, yeah, I can't really say too much about, you know, where is it coming from? That's sort of a whole other, um, yeah, investigation. And, you know, there are, there are ways to do that and, um, uh, but that's not what we sort of are, are presenting here. This is really just ambient data, um, that we collected from the area, from each of these sites, um, to see, to see kind of where we're at, basically. So, yeah, why, uh, formaldehyde in the, in the DOWs, uh, not quite sure. Um, you know, one thing I, forgive me, it has been a while since I looked at this, but we, formaldehyde is, uh, can be formed as a secondary pollutant, um, in areas, uh, with a lot of sunlight and the DOWs is certainly one of those areas, as is La Grande, at least when you compare to the amount of sunlight days that we get here in the Portland area.
Did you have more to present?
No, this is all, uh, this is really the gist of it. And, um, again, I think, you know, the take-home message for you all would be, you know, really this table, I think it does a good job of sort of, you know, showing, uh, levels at 45th and Harney compared to other areas in the state and then also across the U.S.
So, back to my original question about the Johnson Creek data on chromium. So what is the process for, I mean, that's an anomaly in my mind. I look at that and I go, wow, that didn't change at all. So PCC, either PCC wasn't the source in the first place or their filtration system doesn't filter out, I mean, for whatever reason. My, I think that's a pretty extensive filtration system. So my best guess would be that it's coming from someplace else and it's not showing up at Harney, which means it's further south, further into Milwaukee or than, uh, than PCC. What would be the process for trying to determine what that source point is?
It's a good question and, you know, I, uh, I guess just some quick thoughts are coming from the data side of things. There are, uh, ways you can use data to do source apportionment is what it's called and, and, uh, you know, basically comparing wind directions and, uh, concentrations, that sort of thing. Um, so from the data side, you know, there, it would be looking at methods available to do a source apportionment. Uh, there's also modeling that could be done. Um, but then, you know, there's also, I guess, a separate tract in my mind, which would be working with the, uh, the permiters that we have.
That was going to be my next question. Do you have permiters that currently permit a high level of chromium?
Well, if I could, I'll just chime in, Mayor Gamba. So that, one of the next steps is our Clean Air Oregon program, which was developed, you know, after, after 2016 and all the concerns about air toxics in Portland area. So that's, that's where permitted facilities are required to, they're basically called in by DEQ and they go through a process of doing a detailed evaluation of their emissions. And PCC is in that program right now. As I understand it, our Clean Air Oregon folks are evaluating PCC's emissions and taking it through that Clean Air Oregon process. And, and what's different about that is that the, the, the criteria for that are established are risk-based. So it's a question of what is the risk to the community from the sources of emissions at specific permitted facilities and PCC is part of that.
Well, I suppose we can talk about this offline. Uh, we do have a pretty tight schedule tonight. Kathy, did you have another question or is your hand just still up? Okay. Um, but if there are no other questions, I appreciate this very much. Uh, it's raised my antennae a little bit on that. Um, and I would like to follow up about that particular anomaly.
Well, I, yeah, I would like to hear more, you know, I'm, I'm sorry we are out of time today because I would like to hear more about, yeah, what are next steps generally? I mean, it's not just for us, but statewide it looks like on how to address some of these or, you know, whatever.
Yeah, certainly. You know, there are other folks at DEQ, our counterparts in the Clean Air Oregon program, for example, and the permitting folks that could probably better answer some of those, you know, what happens next questions. But we can certainly, um, um, put that, put that out there. And if you're interested in a presentation about those questions, then we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I think that would be interesting to have. And then, um, like I said, I'd like some follow-up on, on that chromium data.
Absolutely.
I assume Scott has your contact information?
Yes, he does.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Well, thank you all.
Very interesting. Thank you. Yeah, it could have easily been a two-hour thing, I think, probably.
There's a lot there, yeah. And, um, yeah, happy to answer questions and, and deal with the, any follow-up questions. So thank you all for your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. As I said at the beginning of the meeting, we have a, um, executive session following this. I'm hoping that we keep this next section to a half hour as well, if possible. So Peter Passavelli, uh, and, um, Chris Storey. Peter Passavelli, our Public Works Director, and Chris Storey will be talking about our regional inflow and infiltration reduction agreement. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor Gamba. Uh, I, I am Peter Passavelli. I'm the Public Works Director and as, as Mayor Gamba mentioned, we're here tonight to, to provide a, a discussion and a presentation on a regional infiltration and inflow agreement between the city of Milwaukee and our, our wastewater treatment partner, Water Environment Services. Uh, I, I think we've talked about this in the past. I think Wes has been here at, at several of our other, uh, annual updates and has mentioned this, uh, agreement and some of the work that they've been doing as it relates to I and I, which is infiltration and inflow in the system. And, and really the bottom line on what this agreement does is it, it provides an expansion and funding for our infiltration and inflow prop, uh, inflow projects that the city has and its CIP. It expands it from what's in our current IGA from a 10% funding mechanism to, uh, 33%. So I know Chris has a, a presentation, brief presentation to go over that sort of highlights the, uh, what the issue is and why we're doing the agreement and, and, and sort of outlines the agreement. So Chris, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here before you and I believe I can keep you not only on schedule, perhaps ahead of schedule because, uh, as a city council, you've been very gracious with your time and giving us an opportunity previously to share about this. So I will be brief. Um, I do want to, just for anyone that is watching, uh, make sure that they know what infiltration inflow is, which is basically rainwater or groundwater that gets into sewer pipes, and is then conveyed down to the treatment plant, where under the Clean Water Act, we treat every drop of water that shows up as if it's sewage, and we treat it to the best of our ability to make sure that no pollution gets out into the rivers to protect public health and the environment. There's lots of different ways that I and I can get into it, and I know Peter has discussed this with you before, so I'll just leave it with some nice visuals of what it looks like when water does get in. The foundation for this conversation really arose out of a regional study that Wes commissioned that was actually finished back in late 2019, that looked at where we are seeing excessive inflow and infiltration. I will note that a certain amount of I and I is natural and expected. Water finds a way. What we're really targeting is where it is excessive, because the study actually looked at four different approaches to try and address inflow and infiltration, ranging from purely expanding the treatment works to handle the flow as it gets in and just treating it there, to a 10%, 35%, and then 65% reduction strategies, and those, from an industry standard, are really targeted towards interceptors, collector lines, and the 65% is targeting all the way up to the street laterals, where you can get a lot of, you know, trees, roots getting in, et cetera, et cetera. And our study suggested, and we've shared this with the city engineers and public works directors as part of our technical advisory team that gets together, that by far the cheapest way for ratepayers to proceed collectively is to target that 65% I and I reduction. Now, you may be looking at this map, which is from 2019, and thinking, hey, this is fantastic. Milwaukee's not on there in red. That's because, I believe Peter could correct me if I'm wrong, at the time that we completed this study, the city of Milwaukee was doing your own study, and those points hadn't yet been integrated, but, and I'm going to stop there because Peter unmuted.
I was just going to say, yes, that is correct, Chris.
Yes. But we have identified areas in collaborating with each other where there is opportunity for improvement within the city boundaries, and we want to offer that same opportunity to the city of Milwaukee that we've identified in other cities. Ultimately, because by working together to remove the I and I from the lines themselves, rather than treating it at the wastewater treatment plant, we save our ratepayers a collective $120 million over the next 20 years. So that's really the impetus behind this conversation. This is the most effective way for our ratepayers to address it. And Counselor Bay?
I'm having trouble, I'm having trouble understanding the percentages. So over Milwaukee, it looks like there's a 50 and a 62%. That's some estimate of how much I and I we have?
In some ways, the key takeaway here is the red, as far as where we're targeting, because it's linked to particular pipe sheds. And some pipe shed, it's not just how much is getting into the system, but how much is getting in the system that causes a capacity constraint in the lines themselves that may cause backups into people's homes, or onto streets, or into streams, and/or that we have to use pumps to try and convey it aggressively to treatment plants to be able to handle it. There's some places that don't have those same constraints, and so they're less of a priority from an investment standpoint. Ultimately, we'd like to have a nice, tight system, but you always have to rank your dollars, as I'm sure you know, because you can't do everything. The key from this, you might say, to heat map, is looking at where the excess I and I is that we think we can really nab out. And one of the key takeaways that we've been offering to everyone is, every single city that operates a collection system has identified areas where I and I is excessive and needs to be reduced. And those cities, other than the city of Happy Valley, run your own collection system, right? Peter is talking to you constantly about investment in your system. And our recognition is, we are asking the cities to invest in the system in a way that saves your ratepayers' money, but everyone's money, by not investing in the treatment works. So we want to contribute to that effort, recognizing that it's a regional system.
And, you know, through our modeling and flow monitoring that we did as part of our water master plan, we did certainly identify some areas where we did have increased I and I. We also identified areas that were in better condition than we thought originally. And a lot of that has to do with, you know, the programmatic approach that we took to replacing clay pipe in the system. So we've removed a lot of, almost all of the clay pipe in our system. The last remaining area is Waverly Heights, and that's one of the projects that we've identified in our CIP and anticipate submitting as a project to use some of the funds that Wes is making available.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah.
So, and I want to actually compliment the city of Milwaukee, because it was our agreement with you that was the spark for this regional approach, because we have in our default IGA with you, you might say the master IGA, that's probably a better way of saying it, an incentive that we would pay 10% to support I and I projects for the city. And what we've discovered since then is that that wasn't moving the needle enough for y'all to really make a difference, so we reevaluated. Counselor Falconer?
Hi there. So I've got a question for, maybe it's for Peter, but, you know, maybe it's for everyone, about whether our concerns about sort of qualification to receive the grant money, whether that's been addressed in the draft, that it's in our packet. So I'm thinking about places, for example, where, you know, like our big clay pipe projects, because of their material, because of their age, you know, we don't have some of the flow data that, you know, might be, you know, might kind of fall under these criterias that, you know, that the TAC team would require in terms of like granting that money. But quite clearly, you know, so I'm just, I guess my question is, have we been satisfied that, you know, that the qualifications aren't so high that we're sort of like leaving opportunity for money for projects that clearly are going to go to reduce our I and I? But we just don't simply, you know, it seems like a waste of money and effort and resources to go out and generate a bunch of data for a project that should qualify.
Yeah, you know, Jen Garble and I had a pretty good discussion about this, and we felt like, you know, there were some pieces there to make sure that, you know, when we submit a project to the technical advisory team for this program, that there are some data requirements in some cases, but we felt that they weren't really overly onerous. And as part of our, you know, wastewater master plan, WSC had recommended anyway that we do periodic flow monitoring of our system to sort of, you know, sort of keep our finger on the pulse and condition of the system in a programmatic approach. So we didn't feel like it was really going to be that much of a problem, but, you know, we did talk about that earlier, but I think we're in good shape, and it's not really a concern anymore.
And I will observe, the agreement offers, you know, and frankly, we're not just paying for the actual physical projects that you do on the ground, that grant support is there for the studies and planning and everything else. And what we're really trying to target is more demonstration that the projects have had the effect that we're hoping that they'll have on the flip side, rather than beforehand. I think Peter walked in and said, I have a clay pipe, and here's video of it leaking, no one's going to say, well, go monitor for you. Hey, we're all trying to get on the same page, and we're going to support that. And indeed, the group that he'll be talking to, which is part of the IGA that I wanted to emphasize, is that technical advisory team of fellow public works directors, and the standard that they hold Peter to is the same standard they have to hold themselves to. So I think everyone has an incentive to be very reasonable in what they have to require to have a qualifying project. And to be transparent, we want projects to qualify, because frankly, this agreement is very much emphasizing early action. If you might ask us what the philosophy is behind this, is it's sharing savings, but the earlier you can remove I and I from the system, the greater the savings we will all share. Because if it takes us 15 years to remove the I and I, we spent 15 years treating that at the wastewater treatment plant, and that's showing up in your rates every year. We can get it now. Every year, it compounds the savings that's available for everybody. So this funding mechanism, we're calling it a pilot project, because we're not sure exactly how it's going to go, but we feel very confident, having had conversations with Peter and all the other public works directors around their CIP, and what you've published and the studies you've done, that we can support for this five-year program what you are going to do. And we will make those resources available to you. And this is, I think, a key point to emphasize, there's no competition for dollars between cities with this agreement. If you have projects and everyone agrees that it's a qualifying project, you will get funded. There's no, you know, metro hierarchy competing with other cities for the opportunity to repave your boulevard type of conversations that you have to go through in other venues. We want this to happen, so we're really just pushing forward to make sure that you can get the funding that you need to make it happen. Counselor? Sorry.
No problem. Is there, are you feeling like five years will be adequate, or have you had some thought about whether or not the program might need to be extended, and whether or not the funds would be available to continue if the work isn't quite yet up to par?
Absolutely. Great question. Our projection is the work is actually going to take 20 years to do it. Right, we're in the wastewater world, and we're dealing with engineering and planning. There's a long sort of arc of work that needs to be done. We were very confident for the first five years that we had the resources available to support everybody without condition or claim. We didn't want to make that promise for 20 years. We didn't have that same degree of confidence. So what we're doing is, by calling it a pilot project, is saying, we're all going to get back together in five years, and the West Advisory Committee is going to look at the work that's been done, the level of accomplishment that's been achieved, et cetera, and then look at Wes's finances and see if we can continue on the same path or pattern, or if we need to start, you know, putting a fixed amount in place and prioritizing projects between cities to emphasize particular basins. Who knows? But to really kickstart the project and get those early savings, we're putting our chips in the middle and hoping people will come with us. So I think I've actually covered the majority of this slide, other than noting that we appreciate being on your agenda, because Glass, Stone, Happy Valley, Johnson City have already signed the agreement. We're having a conversation with you tonight. I understand that if you are supportive, it will come up at a city commission meeting relatively shortly. Our hope is frankly to get this in front of the board in early March, the Board of County Commissioners as the governing body of Wes. And once they sign it, that money is available right away to your public works directors to support your projects. So we're not even waiting for a fiscal year flipover. We're trying to make it happen right away. I did want to emphasize, in particular, part of this approach is a recognition on our part that your public works team knows their system better than we do. So we are not looking to tell you what projects to do. We're asking your team to identify where those projects are, and then share them with other public works directors, and say, we think this is the right priority, and, you know, but you have the flexibility to decide how those dollars are going, how they're prioritized, and where you want to spend it. So we want to support you in those conversations. Counselor Bay?
Peter noted that we're almost finished removing clay pipe. Do other cities in the region still have clay pipe?
There's a variety of materials between various cities, and indeed, sometimes the challenge has been, when they replace a system, they upgrade it as well, which makes the pipe bigger. Sometimes they make it smaller. Sometimes smaller is a constraint that creates a problem downstream. Sometimes bigger means they are happy to convey that I and I flow down to the treatment plant, rather than messing with it. So we're trying to get everyone on the same page about what the ultimate target or goal is, which is that 65% I and I reduction. Our, Wes's capital group is designing, and this is the caveat that I would throw out there, are still designing expansions to the wastewater treatment plants, particularly at tri-cities, because even with a 65% reduction, we will still experience significant peak flows, and we will have to expand the treatment plant to be able to handle them. Oregon has the gift of really rainy season in the winter, so we see significant peakings there. Just to give you an example of the type of issue that we're talking about, the standard flow in the summer is, you know, 9 million gallons a day. In the winter, during a heavy rainstorm, it could be 70 million gallons. We can see a peaking factor of over eight or nine to one versus our dry weather flow. And that is not suddenly a whole bunch of new houses connecting to the system, that is rainwater and groundwater getting in. So we all recognize that that's not the best way to spend ratepayer dollars, is using all the chemicals and electricity to try and treat rainwater. So we think this is a great partnership and a way to move forward in addressing that in a way that's both cost-effective and frankly, better overall from impact to the environment and climate change. That actually concludes my presentation. So I will stop sharing and make myself available for any other questions you may have.
Are there any other questions?
I'll just say, I think it's a great program, and I appreciate the work that Wes put in in collaborating with public works directors throughout the region, and I think this is a great opportunity for us for making some good change that we already wanted to do, and we're glad to have the opportunity to partner with you all in this. So thanks to Wes.
Thank you very much. This was the brainchild of our director, Greg Geist. He has been saying for at least three years, I and I is the next big thing we have to worry about. So this is definitely like a capstone project from his perspective. He really wants to get this in place. And in many ways, lots of our city partners, especially, I would say, Milwaukee is already running down this path, so we're just trying to give you better shoes. You can go a little faster.
Yeah, we are definitely excited about this opportunity.
Yeah, we look forward to voting on it.
Thank you very much for allowing me to be here tonight.
Good to see you. With that, we will be adjourned, after we adjourn, we will be meeting an executive session pursuant to Oregon revised statute RS 192.6602H to consult with counsel concerning legal rights and duties of the public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Couldn't wrap my tongue around that. With that, I think we are adjourned here. Scott, is it a new link for the executive session?
Different link.
All right. See you all in a couple minutes.